Housing and Community Development Department's Virtual Spring Community Meeting. My name is Chris Robinson and I'm a senior planner here with HCDD. And I am absolutely excited to be with you all to talk about the 2021 Annual Action Plan. Just a few housekeeping items, this event will be recorded and it will be posted on our website after this meeting along with the presentation slides and the draft 2021 Annual Action Plan. Also, if you could make sure that your mic is muted, just monitor your mics throughout the evening so that we can hear everything that our speakers have to say. And we're also asking those who are joining us via Teams that you limit the chat box to our technical support issues and for those who would like to sign up for a public comment. But with that, I would just like to thank everyone. Thank you so much for joining us and we'll hop right into the event. So we're going to kick things off with a welcome address from our director, Mr. Tom McCaslin. Then we'll have a presentation which will cover some COVID-19 updates, an overview of our department's programs, the proposed budget and the anticipated accomplishments for 2021. We'll also have a public hearing segment immediately following the presentation, which we hope will help inform your public comment when the time comes for that. Also, I just want to let everyone know that every public comment that is made here will be recorded and addressed in our action plan. And finally, we'll have some final remarks and also some resources to share with you guys and after which we will adjourn the meeting. But for now, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Tom McCaslin. Sir, the floor is all yours.
Thank you so much, Kristin, and thank you to everyone who has joined us for this public hearing. We know it's been over a year since COVID has hit us and a lot has changed in that last year. But we appreciate your patience with us. We've had some bumps along the way as we have tried to adapt to a virtual environment and adapting in that virtual environment, especially for the public hearing process of the work that we do. The, so let me just say, thank you for joining. We've got a lot of information that will be coming to you throughout this meeting. And we, we know it's complicated information. Our primary funder is the federal government through the Housing and Urban Development Department. The good news is that we have funding. The bad news is that sometimes it comes with a lot of complications, a lot of acronyms. And we're going to do our best today to break that down so that it's readily understandable and that you can see how these funds are intended to benefit low-income families and neighborhoods, especially the neighborhoods where you live or neighborhoods that you are advocating for. We had a public Housing Committee this morning with city council. And one of the things that we talked about there that I want to reiterate today is that while there are millions of dollars coming for the, from the federal government, that can be used for the kind of affordable homes, rental homes, public improvements and flood detention, very public services that we all want, there is not enough money, given the immense need in this city. And I'll just point to one fact that we've been talking about very regularly here. Over the last, you know, over the last 12 months and for the next 12 months or so, we'll be building about 3,000 affordable rental homes through our multifamily program. That represents a total construction of over a billion dollars. That represents city investment of about $350 million. And it's going to be affordable to a range of folks, starting at 30% area median income, that's about the poverty level, up to the folks who are lower income but working families. The difficulty is that in our city alone, there are about 76,000 households who are at that poverty level and who pay more than half of their income on rent. 76,000, we just spent a billion dollars, not all of our money, only a third of it about our, our money, to build 3,000 units. And there's 76,000 people who are working, who are seniors, who may be disabled, who desperately need an affordable home. So that's the challenge that we are faced with every year when we come to budget. I said it this morning and I'll say it again, when we budget these kinds of funds, as well as our other taxpayer dollars, the budget is a moral document. It reflects our priorities. And we will do everything we can to make sure that these dollars are spent wisely, that they get quickly into the community and that they hit the priorities that you flag for us. But I want to emphasize the fact that without the proper level of funding from the federal government and without a society that properly pays people what they deserve, that properly pays a livable wage to our hard-working men and women throughout our communities, we cannot solve this problem alone as a Housing and Community Development Department. And so we are partners with you to ensure that the money that we have is spent wisely and for the right priorities. And we want to be partners alongside of you to make sure that these priorities get the attention they deserve from our federal partners. And with that, I thank you again for joining. There's a lot more information to come and I will be here listening as we go through this, especially during the public comment period. So please know that while I'm not on the video, I am here listening closely and will be looking forward to working with the staff as we take action on the guidance that you give us. Kristin, back to you.
Thank you so much, Mr. McCaslin, for joining us. And so not only do we have Mr. McCaslin with us tonight, but we are also going to be hearing from Kimmy Johnson, who is an administrative coordinator on our Fair Housing team. And she'll be giving us an update on how we are helping Houston residents to be more resilient during this pandemic. After that, you'll be hearing from Mary Itz, who's going to give an overview of our department's programs. And then you're going to hear from Derek Sellers, who will be our moderator for the public hearing portion. And he'll also give us some final remarks. But before we get into these topics, let's talk about the purpose of our 2021 Virtual Spring Community Meetings and why these public hearings are so important. So we're here to talk about the 2021 Annual Action Plan, which is a strategic plan that we develop every year. It outlines our annual goals and strategies for addressing Houston's housing and community needs by budgeting about $48 billion that we anticipate receiving from HUD entitlement grants. So we'll discuss these projects and what we want to accomplish in the next year using this funding. And then we want to hear from you all. We want to get your input on this draft plan so that we can continue meeting the needs of all of our Houstonians. And just for a brief minute, I wanted to carve out a little time to say how much I truly miss holding these meetings in person and having real dialogue with you guys. But unfortunately, we're still in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic and we want to continue keeping all of our families and our staff as safe as possible by holding these meetings virtually. I know it's been a really hard year for everyone, but we want to continue engaging with you all. And we've tried different platforms to keep the communication pathways open, but you know, we are learning by trial and error. So until we see each other face-to-face again, we'll keep trying to make these, trying to make these meetings as effective and interactive as we can with the resources that we have. So to help with that, we've added some creative content to this presentation. So even though we won't have any roundtable discussions during this meeting, I hope that you'll be able to learn more about the work that we do here at HCDD. So who are we? Well, the Housing and Community Development Department focuses on building a city where everyone has a home that they can afford in a community where they can thrive. And we build and sustain affordable homes and provide supportive services for low and moderate income persons. We improve parks and neighborhoods. We drive economic development along with improving infrastructure. And all of these things together are so important to understanding the annual action plan because the vision really drives the work that we do here at HCDD and it ultimately helps to set these goals that we have that are outlined in the 2021 Annual Action Plan. So here's a little video and a little bit more information about who we are.
A lot of people are wondering, what exactly is the job of the Housing and Community Development Department? As one of the fastest-growing cities in the United States, Houston is adding people and opportunities every day, but we need to make sure that we're growing together. Our department works to create housing opportunities that people can afford in the communities that matter to them. For a lot of our downtown workforce, we're working on keeping affordability close by with multifamily developments like the new Hardey Yards apartment homes. For communities that have spent generations here, we're stopping families from having to leave because of rising housing prices. We're building new homes in Houston's complete communities and repairing homes that have been damaged by wear and weather. We want our residents to have a safe place to live and gather their family. But community isn't just about the roof over your head. We also sponsor hospital branches, community centers, libraries and more. We support the great work of organizations like Avenue CDC and Coalition for the Homeless, which are giving our residents the services that will improve their lives. We envision a Houston where everyone has a safe, affordable home in a community where they can thrive. For more information, please call us at 832-394-6200 or chat with us on your favorite on-line platform.
So part of who we are at HCDD involves making sure that our Houstonians are also more resilient. And we normally talk about this in terms of natural disasters, but we're also going to be talking about this in the, in the context of the COVID-19 pandemic. And so right now, I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Kimmy Johnson, who's going to discuss more information about the work surrounding, the work that we do surrounding COVID-19.
Thank you, Kristin. Good evening. To help, to help Houstonians through the coronavirus crisis, HCDD will administer $66 million in funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, as part of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, Economic Security Act, which is also known as the CARES Act. And this funding will be used to support the work of nonprofit organizations who are going to provide the immediate relief in the form of rent and utility assistance programs, emergency shelter and other activities. Excuse me. So we've also received about a total of $12 million from the U.S. Treasury and $5.86 million from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs to provide rental assistance. So here's a simple breakdown of the $5.86 million of the CDBGCV funding we received through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, or TDHCA, to provide rental assistance for the Texas Emergency Rental Assistance Program, also known as TRAP. So the Alliance for Multicultural Services will be administering this assistance. And for families who are already in line to receive assistance, we'll be aided at first. But we're encouraging families to continue to apply. So combined with the direct allocation of the $70.1 million in the U.S. Treasury funding and the $2 million in CDBGCV funding that the city received to provide rental assistance to families who've been economically impacted by COVID-19, and the remaining funding is provided by Harris County. So the combined resource is total about $159 million in rental and utility assistance to families. So the City of Houston and Harris County have partnered together to leverage these federal resources in order to provide comprehensive assistance to those Houston-Harris County area. Here's the information for this joint initiative and it's called the Houston-Harris County Rental Assistance Program. Tenants that are impacted by COVID-19 may receive rental assistance, which may also cover rental arrears and future rent for up to three months. In order for the tenants to receive this funding, we're asking landlords to enroll in the program so that we can streamline the application process for tenants. And please note that landlords must be enrolled for tenants to receive assistance and tenants can still apply even if the landlord is not currently enrolled. For more information, visit houstonharrishelp.org or call the hotline at 832-402-7568. HCDD is also working to develop an eviction diversion program for families affected by COVID-19. And it's designed to make payments to landlords who have initiated the eviction process in exchange for allowing tenants to remain in their homes with no further eviction proceedings to take place, meaning that they will dismiss or cancel the filing entirely. Both the landlords and the tenants must agree to participate and meet the program requirements. Once we have more information, this information will be posted on our website and sent through our monthly newsletters. The City of Houston, Harris County and the Coalition for the Homeless have also joint resources to leverage the total of $65 million for the purpose of housing and serving 5,000 people experiencing homelessness over the next two years to limit the spread of COVID-19. In this partnership called the Community COVID Housing Program, or CHIP, the City of Houston has committed $31 million of the total $65 million and several nonprofits will help, help us administer these funds. Our nonprofit partners for this initiative include Catholic Charities, Baker Ripley Endeavors, Search, Spring Branch Community Center, Career and Recovery, Houston Housing Authority, Salvation Army, Houston Area Women's Center and Northwest Assistance Ministries. Individuals that are looking for assistance through CHIP will first need to receive a housing assessment at one of the assessment hubs listed on the help card under the Coordinated Access Housing Assessments tab. Please keep in mind that CHIP is for individuals who, individuals and families who are currently experiencing homelessness, but if you need help, please visit homelesshouston.org/help-card to find your housing assessment hub. At this time, I'll hand it over to Ms. Mary Itz. Mary?
Thank you, Kimmy. Now I will review the activities that will take place in program year 2021, which will begin July 1st. Every year, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development allocates about $50 million to the City of Houston through four formula grants. Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG, the Home Investment Partnerships Grant, HOME, the Housing Opportunity for Persons with HIV/AIDS Grant, HOPWA, the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG. We use these formula grants to address housing issues and improve the quality of life for Houston residents each year. The Community Development Block Grant is the most flexible of these four grants. With this grant, the city provides a variety of activities to assist low and moderate-income Houstonians, including housing, public services, public facilities and economic development. The Home Investment Partnerships Grant is used to develop and repair affordable homes and provide other housing assistance like rental assistance. With the Housing Opportunities for Persons with HIV/AIDS, we provide housing and social services for people with HIV/AIDS and their families. Finally, the Emergency Solutions Grant provides funding for shelter, supportive services for people experiencing homelessness or those at risk of becoming homeless. The 2021 Annual Action Plan is an annual plan that sets Houston's strategies for addressing housing and community needs. The document outlines annual goals and the activities that will be funded with the $50 million in anticipated funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development through the four grants mentioned on the previous slide. Each year, we create a new annual action plan. This time, this shows a timeline of the development process. This year's process started in the fall with two virtual meetings and public hearings in November. Since then, we have received our allocation amounts from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We have determined our goals and written a draft annual action plan. We are holding two community meetings this week, this is our first, to receive feedback on the draft plan. We have also published the draft plan for 30 days, which will end April 16th, and we hope to receive feedback from the community about the plan during this time. We will incorporate comments received and then seek city council approval and submit the annual action plan on time in mid-May. Now I'll review some of the activities that we anticipate to continue this year. The Home Repair Program evaluates damaged homes and helps make repairs needed to protect a homeowner's life, health and safety. You may be eligible for home repair services if you meet five basic criteria. You must own your home. Your home must be your primary residence. Your property taxes are current or you have an approved payment plan in good standing. Your household income is at or below 80% of the area median income and your home is located outside of a floodway. If you believe you're eligible for home repair services, please go online and complete the Home Repair Program intake application at our website, houstontx.gov/housing/home-repair. We use a variety of sources to fund our home repair activities, including disaster recovery funds to assist homeowners impacted by recent flood events. We anticipate using Community Development Block Grant funds to repair or reconstruct 32 additional homes by the end of the 2021 program year. The next video will give you a little bit more information about our home repair activities.
The City of Houston Single Family Home Repair Program does exactly what the name suggests. Repair and rebuild the houses of homeowners in need. We prioritize certain low-income people with specific needs and vulnerabilities, including seniors over the age of 62, people with disabilities and people whose current homes pose an immediate threat to their health and safety. On average, the city is able to complete about 100 homes each year through this program, providing stable living conditions and much-needed peace of mind to new renters. See photos of completed homes and the success stories of our applicants at vid.ly/homerepairphotos or learn more at our website, houstontx.gov/housing.
In addition to supporting homeowners through our home repair activities, we also create homeownership opportunities for low and moderate-income Houstonians through a variety of programs. We build new affordable single-family homes through the New Home Development Program, funded through disaster recovery funds and other local funding sources. We also partner with designated nonprofit organizations called CHODOS, which stands for Community Housing Development Organizations, to build additional affordable single-family homes, which is funded through our Home Investment Partnerships Program. We also have a homebuyer assistance program, which supports income-eligible homebuyers purchase their first home with up to $30,000 of down payment and closing cost assistance. This program is funded with a variety of funding sources, including the Community Development Block Grant. In addition, the city and the Houston Community Land Trust have partnered to provide even more affordable options to Houstonians through the Homebuyer Choice Program. Eligible homebuyers can receive up to $150,000 or $100,000 in financial assistance to help lower the cost of buying a home. And the home will be placed in trust with the Houston Community Land Bank. This is a new program that will help preserve home affordability in Houston in the future. Finally, Town Park Village, pictured here, is a 36-acre master-planned community located in the East Little York Homestead area that will include 173 single-family homes. Eighty-three, eighty-three of these homes will be available for low and moderate-income families. The development is a collective effort between our department, HCDD, the Houston Land Bank and the Houston Public Works to provide affordable home-buying options. We also fund development and rehabilitation of multifamily rental homes in neighborhoods throughout Houston. Pictured here is the progression of Green Apartments, which will be 177 apartment homes with 33 of those homes being City of Houston income-restricted. The development is expected to be completed in September of 2021. It will also have onsite support services like health and nutrition programs, computer training, job training and parenting classes. In addition, our department funds the development of rental homes that might be specialized for a particular group of people, like residents experiencing homelessness. The next video shows a recently completed development for Houstonians recovering from addiction. This was developed by the RE Center and includes 62 single-room occupancy residences with support services. The next video will give you more information about the RE Center and this development.
The Fred and Susan Daley Building that we're sitting in today is a place that respects the dignity of everyone who walks in. And if you're talking about overcoming illness, addiction, alcoholism, substance abuse, you need to start with the dignity of the individual that you are addressing. And just because someone is a homeless does not make them a devalued citizen of Houston. The least of all is who we're trying to serve when it comes to those who've been down and out. Those are the people who deserve a gorgeous, beautiful environment in which to recover and then move on with their lives. And that's why we're so excited about this building.
Being a product of this program, being involved with the Vincent RE Center for the last 15 years, I've been exposed to all the wonderful things that this, this organization can bring. I'm the product of this organization. I was found by two gentlemen homeless and severely alcoholic. And these folks brought me in and put me back together, helped with my education. And 15 years later, I'm in the position that I'm in.
For this particular building, the city has committed $4 million out of a total $21 million capital stack, project development cost. And these are funds paid by taxpayers into the important work that RE Center does in the lives of men and women across the city.
We have our signature program, it's a Life Map program, and that's meant to be adaptive to a person's needs. So with this building coming online, we'll have nearly 300 beds. What we do is we provide individualized care on kind of a grand scale. So we have an overarching program that is 12-step model, housing of course, and workforce development, financial literacy.
It is a benefit to our community to ensure folks are overcoming their illnesses, the substance abuse that may have caused them to be homeless in the first place. And this is a wonderful environment in which to do that through not only the housing piece of it, but the essential supportive services to help folks overcome their addictions.
We fund the development and rehabilitation of multifamily rental homes.
We fund the development and rehabilitation of multifamily rental homes through a variety of funding sources. This is a new interactive map where you can view all of HCDD's multifamily developments funded with disaster recovery funding that will be completed over the next few years. Each of these developments will have homes that are rent-restricted to maintain long-term affordability throughout Houston. If you have a few minutes, please take a look at this map. There are over 30 multifamily developments, and the map gives you a breakdown of each development, including the total cost, the city's contribution, the total number of homes, a description of the property, and the affordability period. Most of these have an affordability period of about 40 years. This map not only shows developments with disaster recovery funding, and it's a good example of how our work impacts neighborhoods throughout Houston. To foster healthy communities, HCDD also supports the creation or rehabilitation of neighborhood amenities such as parks, neighborhoods, clinics, and community centers through our public facilities activities. These are examples of a few recent public facility developments. Recently completed, the Telo Market is a new grocery store in the Fifth Ward. It was funded with our Community Development Block Grant funds and Economic Development Initiative funds. The store helps bring fresh food and produce and onsite tortilla factory to residents, along with 71 new jobs. The East End Maker Hub is currently under construction and will be a hub for new startups, allowing businesses to lease collaborative space in a 300,000-square-foot warehouse in the Second Ward. The facility is owned by TXRX Labs, a nonprofit that will house inventors, crafters, coders, and any venture that involves an innovation. The apprenticeship program is intended to equip residents with a range of skills to access higher-paid employment. The next video highlights the importance of the East End Maker Hub.
TXRX is a maker space incubating a large number of small businesses. They're generating jobs for the East End. They have outreach to high school students where they teach them ITech manufacturing skills. These type of jobs are the jobs that pay a livable wage.
When coming over here from my house, I generally see this neighborhood that is between the state of disrepair and cozy, comfortable.
Vacant spaces represent unrealized dreams. A thriving community requires not just housing, but jobs, businesses, and retail that supports the entire community.
We have lots of people that need those good-paying jobs now.
This new space is going to be home to the new wave of small-bash manufacturers in the Houston area. This is such a passion to me because I really believe in developing our communities. How can we get people to either get a job, start a business, or continue their education? Well, this facility allows the opportunity for them to do all of those things.
Manufacturing is one of the few industries where you can go from low-income to middle-income wages through training without a higher education. And so we thought this was particularly impactful in an area where medium-household income is only about $37,000, and a large number of kids that are graduating from high school are making minimum wage because they're not college-bound.
I get excited to come into TXRX Labs every day because of who I might meet. And so the Maker Hub provides an amazing opportunity for that search, that discovery, to expand.
We really love the East End because there's so much potential here. It's fantastically situated.
TXRX is providing the training that we need to fulfill that labor shortage. It is great for our industry, and it is great for our economic development here in the city.
I grew up in Mexico, and I came over to the US when I was one year and eight months. My family wanted a better opportunity. Growing up, I always wanted to create things to help people. I recently graduated high school, and the first thing that I did was I went into the machining program here at TXRX.
We have folks here that are going to continue their education. There are folks here that will be able to get a job as a result of participating in the activities that we do here, and there will be people that start businesses here. So this is a truly big economic development tool for the City of Houston.
My father is a baker, and he specializes in baking, designing cakes. There was a certain point in my life where I wanted to give back to my dad and kind of make something that'll help him. I'm proud of what he does because I admire his tenacity for it, his skill for it. I'm working on a design for an actual automatic icier, and I did a prototype of it. Laser cutting, plasma cutting, welding, all these different skills, when they come together, you can build something pretty cool out of them.
I would contend that throughout our history, we've always made investments that took us to another level as a city. We made an investment in the Port of Houston, which made us a national leader in logistics. We made an investment in the Space Center, which made us a national leader in space. We made an investment in medicine, which made us a national leader in medicine. And here, we're doing something that is going to make us a national leader in manufacturing.
There's no better time to help Houston become the place we all want it to be, and we'd love for you to be a part of that.
Over the next year, HCDD will continue to fund nonprofits that provide essential services to Houstonians. These services include healthcare, childcare, job training, and legal services, rental assistance, and other activities that support low- and moderate-income Houstonians. We also fund services to prevent homelessness and provide housing services to individuals with HIV/AIDS and their families. This slide shows a few of the nonprofit organizations and other city departments that we partner with to provide the public services throughout Houston. Over the next year, we will continue a variety of fair housing initiatives. On March 30th, we will host the second Fair Housing Workshop for landlords and property managers this month. We will provide fair housing information for free to landlords and housing providers and have two attorneys on hand to answer fair housing questions. Don't forget that April is Fair Housing Month, and we will provide a lot of fair housing information through our social media channels next month. This will include a short interview with Danielle Bustamante from the Greater Houston Fair Housing Center about his work. Please join our social media networks to learn more about fair housing. We also anticipate continuing funding nonprofit organizations and advocates to promote fair housing information in their communities throughout Houston through the Fair Housing and Preparedness Outreach Program and the Fair Housing Ambassadors Program. More information about these programs will be available this spring and summer. I will now pass it off to Kristin Robinson to discuss the budgets and the annual action
That was a lot of information about the work that we do, so thank you so much for presenting that. And now I'm going to give a breakdown of the 2021 budgets for all of our entitlement grants that parallels directly with the programs that Mary just reviewed, and I'll also cover the corresponding goals for each of these programs under their respective grants. So every year, we budget funding for specific programs and activities based on the money that HUD is allocated to the City of Houston. And on February 25th, HUD posted its 2021 allocations for the City of Houston. And the budgets on the following slides are based on what HUD has granted to the City of Houston. So the total entitlement grant allocation is about $47.9 million, and this includes the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership Grant, the Housing Opportunities for Persons Living with AIDS Grant, and the Emergency Solutions Grant. And if we include the program income from the activities through the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership Grant, the total anticipated funding is about $48.2 million. So the Community Development Block Grant is totaled at $24.8 million. We have about $10.4 million for the Home Investment Partnership Grant, another $10.8 million for the Housing Opportunities for Persons Living with AIDS Grant, and another $2.1 million for the Emergency Solutions Grant. Again, the following budgets for HCDD are based on these grants, the grant allocations from HUD. So let's do a deeper dive into these budgets and the goals. And so this information is pretty dense, so please hang in there as we comb through this information. Based on our 2021 HUD grant allocation for the Community Development Block Grant, which totals an estimated $24.8 million, we've budgeted the following: about $4.6 million for public services, together with housing services and the Emergency Solutions Grant match. We've budgeted $5.5 million for public facilities, another $5.5 million for home repair and remediation activities, and also $900,000 for home buyer assistance. We've also allocated $75,000 for lead-based paint activities, and we anticipate spending $100,000 to fund prior-year economic development projects that will continue through the program year 2021. Code enforcement will also fund activities totaling approximately $3 million, and we've also set aside $4.9 million for program and administration costs. So through our $24.8 million of the Community Development Block Grant funding, we have anticipated the following goals for 2021. We are hoping to provide public services for about 18,500 households, improving at least one public facility, performing 32,000 code enforcement visits, removing lead hazards from 50 homes, repairing and reconstructing a total of 104 homes, and providing direct financial assistance to 25 low- and moderate-income home buyers. So based on our 2021 grant allocation for the Home Investment Partnership Grant, which totals $10.4 million, we've budgeted $5.1 million for multifamily rehabilitations and developments, approximately $1.7 million for single-family developments, $2.5 million for tenant-based rental assistance, and almost $1 million for planning and administration So in 2021, through the $10.4 million, again for the Home Investment Partnership Grant from HUD, we expect to provide rental assistance and utility assistance to about 200 individuals who are homeless or are at risk of homelessness, to also develop 10 affordable, single-family homes, as well as construct 62 new affordable rental homes. Based on our 2021 HUD grant allocation for the Housing Opportunities for Persons Living with AIDS Grant, also known as HOPWA, which totals $10.3 million, we have budgeted $2.3 million for operating costs, $2.2 million for supportive services, $2.5 million each for tenant-based rental assistance, and also for short-term rent, mortgage, and utility subsidies. We've also budgeted $100,000 for resource identification and $1 million for administrative So through this HOPWA funding, we gear this funding towards helping households who have persons living with HIV and AIDS. And in 2021, HCDD anticipates assisting over 1,800 households with this funding through tenant-based rental assistance, again, short-term rental, mortgage, and utility subsidies, some permanent and transitional shelter facilities, as well as wraparound or supportive services. So based on our 2021 HUD grant allocation for the Emergency Solutions Grant, which totals $2.1 million, we have budgeted about $84,000 for the Homeless Management Information System, approximately $757,000 for supportive services, about $537,000 for homeless prevention, and $568,000 for rapid rehousing, which assists persons who have recently become homeless with finding a new home, and almost $158,000 for administration costs. So through the Emergency Solutions Grant funding, in 2021, we expect to assist over 1,000 persons and 85 households through rent, utility, and relocation or stabilization services, rapid rehousing, similar to the services provided under the HOPWA grant, but this is not geared towards households with persons living with HIV or AIDS. And then also, we'll provide some emergency shelter operations. So that is the end of the budget and the anticipated goals, and now we want to hear from you all. If you want to make a public comment live, please join us through Teams. You can join us at bit.ly/2021SPH, or you can call in on our toll-free line at 1-936-755-1521 using the participant code 38812265, and then hit the pound sign. For a Spanish translator, you'll call the same number at 1-936-755-1521, and you'll use the participant code 493972509, and then hit that pound sign or hashtag. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Derek Sellers, who's going to moderate the public comment portion for us.
Hey, good afternoon. So happy to have all of you join us. Before we get started on this portion of the public hearing, I do want to make one quick correction to an earlier statement. Landlords do not need to participate in order for tenants to receive assistance from the Houston-Harris County Rental Assistance Program. Tenants may still be eligible for assistance without their landlord participating, and so if you're one of those tenants, you can visit houstonharrishelp.org for more details on that. So I just wanted to provide some clarity there. So as we jump into this public hearing portion of the program, although this normal process has been amended for this public hearing format, we still have some few ground rules that we adhere to. Each speaker has about three minutes or has three minutes to testify. We will provide a countdown along the way so you know how much time is remaining. We'll hear calls in order they were received, and yielding time to another person is not allowed. Just to note that testimony is recorded and transcribed. This is not a Q&amp;A session, but rather a public comment period. Summaries of all these comments with their responses are included in our final action plan that we submit to HUD. So how this will work is we'll unmute you, and when your name is called to make a public comment, each commenter should state your name for the record, and then you'll provide your public comment about the draft 2021 annual action plan. We'll begin by taking comments from those that signed up prior to the events. Next, after that point, we'll have a general call for anyone who has not yet testified that would like to. This would include those that had signed up and might have missed their earlier call to testify, or other persons who had not previously testified. So if you did not sign up to comment prior to the event and now wish to do your public comment, you can click your raise hand button that's here in Teams, put your comment into the Q&amp;A box. We will also receive comments in order they're received through the means that were just provided. If there's an audio caller who has not made a public comment and would like to do so, we'll ask that you please unmute. we'll ask that you please unmute yourself and then give your comment. So, that will be the order of how things are heard and how this will work. So, let's move forward with the public comments. Right now, we do not have any prior signups for the public comment period. And so, we'll move on to the next, the next wave of people. So, if you'll click your raise hand button and let us know you want to comment in the Q&amp;A box, or use one of the means for the call-in, that would be, now's the time to And so, we'll give it a minute or two to see if we have interested parties out there during this time. Looks like we do have a hand raised from Eileen Egan.
Are you ready for my comment?
Yes, ma'am. If you'd like to move forward.
Yes, I'd like to suggest that under the CDBG program where you discuss code enforcement and code visits, is maybe it's not so much how many visits are made as the improvements that result, that is a better measure of impact? Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate your comments and we'll take that into consideration for sure. So, any other persons that would like to comment? Please raise your hand. All right, we'll do one more call. All right, seeing no other takers, I don't believe we have anybody that has called in that would like to be heard at this moment. So, that will bring us to the conclusion of this public hearing portion.
Thank you, Derek. We're going to wait till we get to that proper slide. Thank you, Jess. So, at this time, Derek, if you have any final remarks before I get into the resources that we want to share with everybody, is there anything that you would like to say to this group?
Yeah, I do want to thank everybody for joining us today, especially in a format like this, for being flexible as we still try to deliver this information to the public in a COVID-19 environment, as was touched on earlier. It's, we've had to flip around with a lot of different means and methods to make that happen, but we want to make sure this information gets out. It takes a lot of work from the department, departmental staff to make this happen. So, thanks to all the departmental staff that were involved in this. I do want to touch on also, there is another public hearing Thursday night at six o'clock. So, you know, tell your family, your friends, your neighbors about it, inform them, we'd love to hear from them. Or maybe you reflect on what you heard today and that's another opportunity for you to provide your comment to us. Submit them online. We up on the screen right now have the other ways to comment. Please utilize those methods. We want to hear that feedback from you. We also like to hear free feedback from you on how to improve these events. So, if you've got some recommendations, pass that along to us as well. So, that's, I guess, how I wrap my piece up.
Thank you. And Tom, did you have anything that you wanted to add before we close?
Thank you, Kristin, and thank you, Derek, Mary, Kimmy, for all of the incredible information. And I'll just add my comments to Derek's. We know this is a difficult environment. We hope that as the vaccines roll out, that you're out there getting the vaccines. I understand on Monday that all adults in Texas will be eligible, so I'm looking forward to getting my vaccine as well, as quickly as we can, and are with a goal of getting back to a post-COVID-normal. And hopefully, very soon, a setting where we can be engaging face-to-face, having the conversations around the round tables that we are used to as we tackle these very serious issues about how we improve the lives of Houstonians, who are so incredibly important to the economic success, both in the present and the future. And so, thank you to the entire team who made today's work possible. Thank you to all of the partners, some of whom we have been referenced in the, the videos that you saw, but so many of them who, without whom we cannot do our work. And so, we greatly appreciate your participation. We greatly appreciate the work that you do day in and day out, day out, on behalf of Houstonians. And let me just close by saying that we are always trying to get better. We, we know that as we do these public meetings, we've got to satisfy our funders, who are the federal government, who have certain requirements we must meet. But we also want to make sure that we are having real conversations about the issues that impact you on a day-to-day basis. And so, if, we know it's awkward to have those conversations in a virtual setting. We have a lot of opportunities for you to engage in that conversation, including our monthly housing committee, but several other monthly meetings that involve nonprofit organizations and other groups that you can get involved with. So, if you're interested in engaging with us, not just on a once-a-year or twice-a-year basis, but on a very regular basis in your community, reach out to any of the information or any of the ways that you see in front of you in terms of communicating, and ask for some information about some of those additional ways for us to hear your voice. We work hard as a team to make sure that Houston's most vulnerable representative, vulnerable residents have a voice. And so, it's so important for us to hear that voice as we are designing the programs, not after the fact, but as we're designing them. And we're excited about some of the programs that are putting the power into the hands of the families who are most impacted. That's why we stood up our Community Land Trust Home Buyer Program, Home Buyer Choice Program, was because we honestly believe that the families who need the services know what's best for themselves. And so, if we can put the power back into the hands of the community and back into the hands of the families, we believe we're doing our job. And we need your participation as we do that. So, thank you again. Please share the good news of the work that is happening. Give us feedback on additional work that you would like to see. And we look forward to an ongoing conversation so that we, as the city of Houston, can actually become a place where every resident has a home they can afford in a community where they can thrive. Thank you, and Kristin, back to you.
Thank you so much, and I love that. Guys, please be a part of that ongoing conversation. There's multiple ways to comment. You can go online to our website at houstontx.gov/housing, and there's a public hearing page where you can actually do, make a comment online, straight from the website. You can also email us at hcddplanning@houstontx.gov. You can mail us at Attention Planning and Grants Management. The address is 2100 Travis Street, ninth floor, in Houston, Texas, 77002. Or you can also leave us a voicemail, and yes, we check them. That number is eight-three-two-three-nine-four-fifty-four-hundred. I also want to acknowledge really quickly our Facebook Live viewers and those viewing us on HTV Live, their Facebook Live as well. Thank you for participating with us, and you guys are also free to participate in these ways as well. I also want to encourage you guys to visit our Housing Resource and Data Center, also known as our HRDR portal, where you can find all kinds of information. We've created interactive maps, we've provided data sets, research reports, and journal articles. So, if you're looking for data and research about Houston, you can find that information here. You can geographically look at your council district, your super neighborhood, look at flood hazard areas, socially vulnerable areas. All that information is put together right here at your fingertips. You can even pull these data sets that we use in our work and download and analyze them yourself. And so, there are just some really cool things here to play around with. So, please take some time to look, to look at these resources, and that link should be posted in the chat for you guys who are joining us via Teams. Also, please don't forget to take the My Home Is Here survey. We are wrapping this survey up this month. It is a joint initiative between the city of Houston and Harris County. We want to find out what home means to you, and the survey only takes about ten minutes, so please go online to myhomeishere.org and take this survey today. And lastly, just a reminder, please visit houstonharris-help, excuse me, houstonharris-help.org, or you can call the hotline at eight-three-two-four-zero-two-seven-five-six-eight if you've been impacted by COVID-19 and you're in need of rental assistance. We want to help you guys, so please reach out to us. And with that, it has been my pleasure having you guys here. If you haven't already done so, please sign up for our monthly newsletter so we can continue this ongoing conversation and have you guys involved. Also, follow us on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, and thank you for joining us, and just have a great night. Thank you, guys.